All right, everyone. Thank you for your patience. We now have quorum. So we're gonna go ahead and begin with our Tuesday, November 12th meeting. May I have? Roll call, please.
Clark. Dutra? Here.
Want this, you know?
Here.
Orosco?
Here.
Parker? Salsido?
Here.
Thank you, those Carter.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you very much. All right, we're moving on to item one A introduction of new employees and recognition of retirees. May I have? The library come up first, please. Thank you. And welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Lisa Martinez, Library Director, and I'm here to introduce our new librarian who will be working in adult services. Marilyn Crushak. Yeah, and so we're so happy to have her here. She came on board from Monterey County Free Libraries, used to work at Monterey Public, and so she will be helping with programming outreach services. And we're so excited to have her on board. She comes with a lot of wealth of information and a lot of ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and welcome. All right, next up, may I have police join us at the podium? Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members, city manager, city staff. I'd like to introduce four of our newer police officers. They have all completed the Police Academy in our rigorous field training program and have been out on their own for about two or three months. I'll start with the first. To be Officer Moises Lopez. Officer Lopez was born and raised here in Watsonville. He attended Watsonville High School and Carrillo College. He previously worked as a Santa Cruz County Sheriff's Correctional Officer. He is excited to work for his hometown and for the opportunity to give back to his community. He is currently serving as a patrol officer on swing shift. Do you have any questions for him?
No, welcome. If you'd like to say a few words, feel free.
Thank you.
The next one is Officer Fernando Avalos. Officer Avalos was born in Salinas. Since he was a kid, it was his dream to be a police officer. He graduated from Gabalon College with an Associate's Degree in Administrative Justice. He went on to obtain a Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice from California State University of Sacramento. Two of the things he enjoys doing in his free time is working out, spending time with his loved ones. He's currently serving as a patrol officer on day shift.
Welcome.
Next, we have Officer Danny Victory. Officer Victory is born and raised in Watsonville. He graduated from California State University of San Jose with a Bachelor's Degree in Justice Studies. In his free time, he enjoys playing basketball and golfing, as well as spending quality time with his family and his dog. He also enjoys traveling and trying out new foods. Two of his favorite professional sports teams are the Los Angeles Lakers and Las Vegas Raiders. He is currently serving as a patrol officer on day shift.
Welcome.
And for our final officer, we have Officer Justin Lemus. Officer Lemus was born in San Jose and raised in Gilroy. He's a graduate of Christopher High School in Gilroy. He previously worked for the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Office as a correctional work officer. In his free time, Officer Lemus enjoys spending time with his friends and family. He's currently serving as a patrol officer on graveyard shift.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you very much. All right, I think that is it for our new employees and retirees. So we're gonna go ahead and move forward to item two. Reports to council and we are on item two A. We have a report by Public Works and Utilities Director Lindberg on citywide lighting assessment. Welcome. Good evening, council. Is this volume okay? Okay, great. All right, so I am joined by Jaime Rodriguez. I don't know how we'll do this to not be awkward, like bending over. I will pass it to Jaime Rodriguez with traffic patterns. We have a short presentation and then we are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Hello, Mayor, members of the city council. Thanks for letting me be here tonight to present to you our streetlight study that we did for Watsonville this past summer. So tonight, if our presentation will give you a little bit of history about the status of your current streetlights, your current LED streetlights that were installed roughly about 15 years ago and what the city does to operate and maintain those lights. We'll talk a little about about the survey study that we did and kind of where that's kind of going next. And then we'll talk about some of the evaluations of new streetlights that the city has been considering. And we have some demonstration units in the city that we'll talk about tonight. So if you haven't had a chance to look them, if you didn't have a chance to read the report tonight, you'll have a chance maybe after to swing by some of those intersections that where we install the demos at night for you. And then lastly, we'll talk about some of the funding and our recommendations to the city for future projects. So your existing streetlights roughly are about 15 years old. I think they're roughly closer to 20 years old because the city unfortunately doesn't maintain a good record of when the streetlights that are in the field were installed. And we don't maintain today a log of when repairs take place. So we do have a contract that goes out and repairs streetlights, but we don't have a going list anywhere in the city that says this streetlight was repaired two years ago, for example. The manufacturer of the lights that are mostly in Watsonville are from a company called Leo Tech. And their first generation streetlights are what you have is what a lot of cities have that are that have streetlights about the age of Watsonville. Those lights roughly had about a 50,000 hour life, which roughly is about 10 to 15 years. And you're you're towards tail end of those life cycles and in some cases are past that now. For operations and maintenance, you're pretty much response driven. So as residents call in and notify the city that there's an outage, the city uses its on-call contractor bare electrical services and they do a great job of going out and responding to the repairs when they come in. But it's only when those calls come in that we actually dispatch them to go make the repairs. You have about $100,000 budget in your current CIP, but only 50,000 of 100,000 is actually dedicated towards repairs. The other 50,000 is dedicated for knockdowns. So like inclement weather, if someone knocks a pull down, that's what that $50,000 knockdown budget is for. So most of your streetlights are going to be either on PG&E poles or your own city-owned poles. And you guys have several different decorative poles throughout town. In the downtown core, when the LED retrofit took place about 15 plus years ago, downtown was retrofitted to LEDs, but any other location in town where you have decorative poles, you do not have LEDs. Those are still either high-pressure sodium lighting or some of the type of incandescent bulb. So the the lifecycle on bulbs is going to be a lot lower, closer to seven years. And so those are those repairs that bear usually will go out to kind of take care of for you. And I did want to point out one thing that I forgot to point out real quick. So I'm gonna go back here. So this slide, so I'm gonna I'm gonna point it back to you a little later. This is Aloney Parkway on the border between District One and District Four. The little, unfortunately, the bright portion you see towards the bottom right of that, that's the headlights of my car. So but what I want you to note is that there's two streetlights there, and that's about a 15-year-old streetlight. Each of those lights is about 100 watts. So I'm gonna just kind of burn that image at your head. I'm gonna kind of point it back to you a little later. Okay, so I'm gonna get past here. So what we did for our project for you is we did really three primary tasks. The first one was we just inventoried your streetlights. We did get an initial list of streetlights from your GIS program, but it didn't tie the lights back to addresses. And so we weren't unfortunately, weren't able to use your GIS data to create an inventory. So we actually used combination of Google Maps, streetlight imagery to actually identify where all the lights were in the city. And then we kind of use Google GPS points. We can get that back to the cities. They can update your GIS layer. But more importantly, that let us identify pole numbers because the the GIS layer we got from the city, the numbers, the asset numbers didn't relate back to the pole numbers in the street. So if someone calls in today, a lot of those pole numbers are faded. And so we have to like kind of guess or we get a call, we go out, we look for light, and then we dispatch to bears. It's a little little bit of an extra work. The other thing we did was we visited all the poles during the day and we identified what we call day burner lights. So those are lights where the lights don't turn off. And so that's typically because there's a sensor that's right on top of the streetlight called a photocell. If that photocell isn't working, the light never turns off. So it's a really simple, quick repair, but you gotta dispatch somebody to fix it. Then we went back, we came back and did every, we surveyed every streetlight at night. We used dark sunglasses, looked at every light. We figured out what's the percentage of failed LED strings. So we we were recommending, hey, anything that's over 50% failed or that has 100% failed, those are the priority repairs that we think the city needs to move forward with. We also did that nighttime survey to figure out, well, where are the dark spots? What we found was where we saw dark spots, you also just had failed lights. So we couldn't really figure out is the dark spot because there's a need for more lighting? Or is it just because the lights that are there are just failed? So we think that when you do do the repairs, it might be worth another visit to figure out, do we really need to add more lighting? Or will just the repairs be enough to fix some of the dark spots? But you do have dark spots at the same time. And I do want, I do want to point out this specific streetlight here because this is in District Six, and this is a very distinctive decorative pole. And that is only incandescent bulb. So we can buy LED retrofits for them, but you know, we don't do that today. So if a light fails, you know, it it nice and shiny and that fix was actually the day that the LED, that the light itself was repaired for us by Bear. Okay, so roughly, there is about 2,500 streetlights in Watsonville. So we think about 300 of those are roughly owned by Caltrans. And Caltrans does actually do a fairly good job of maintaining your streetlights. We actually saw a lot of the lights that were owned along state routes were actually brand new or looked relatively new. So you have 2,200 lights that are maintained and owned by the city. And we didn't cipher out what we think our HOA responsible maintained privately owned lights. So of that, you have 171 failed lights. This was as of two months ago. When we went out just getting ready for this presentation, we probably we saw more. So you're starting to see more failures quickly. But we also saw about 266 at that, that's how we did the study. Lights were 50% or more of the LEDs things were failed. So those were what we called dim lights. So I think if it had just been a new streetlight, the streets would look a lot brighter. But a lot of times what we saw when we were seeing complaints would be gotten surveyed at night, it isn't that that the LEDs weren't working since they were just too dim because they were half failed. Okay, and so your dayburners had about 76 and we've seen more. So they get closer now to about 85 dayburner lights. And then where we saw dark spots, we saw about 23, 22 locations where we need at least one, maybe two lights. So here is a couple of images. On the far right is a dayburner. Just you can see it, that's that's off of Green Valley Boulevard. And then the failed lights are right in front of City Hall. So that's just an example of that is an LED light, but it is failed. And that's a double acorn light. So as part of this effort, we actually reached out to several streetlight manufacturers. Cree LEDs are, they're my favorite LED streetlights. I think they do a really good job. They have, I think, put into better reputations in the industry. And they actually sent us two free evaluation units to look at. So we installed, we had Bear install those for you. The first image on on Auto Center San Bernardino Drive, that was what was what we saw as an initial dark spot before we realized there were two lights that were just burnt out. So that's behind the middle school. And I want you, remember I told you, hey, burn that image from the previous slide where there was two lights that are 100 watts? That's a 60-watt bulb, and that's not my headlights shining on the roadway. So with the newer technology with even less power, you get significantly more light output and distribution. The second light is a 40-watt light, and we we asked for what's a typical residential versus a typical like collector type street? And that's the second image. I personally thought that the 40-watt light was probably too dim. I think you could use the 60-watt light in all your residential neighborhoods and your collector streets and save the 100-watt lights for your arterials. And it just is a quick note, we helped Watsonville submit a grant proposal that we're waiting for a response on by the end of the year. And if you do get that grant, you'll have all new streetlights along Airport, Freedom, and Green Valley. So we're definitely looking for opportunities to help fund your streetlight program. Oh, sorry, should have been going on that that 40-watt light is on Coolidge. It's just off of Riverside Drive. It's at the end of the cul-de-sac, if you're interested in taking taking a look. So what we were recommending is a seven-year CIP program to retrofit all of your LEDs in the city. Unfortunately for us again, because you don't have records of what's been maintained over the last few years, in year one, we think you need to repair your failed lights along with the lights that are at least 50% fail and the dayburners. And then we were contacted by the county of Monterey. You have joint ownership of streetlight maintenance for the bridge over Pahara River. And so they're ready to actually repair those lights. But they wanted to, they knew that we were doing this study and they said, well, hey, talk to the city council and let's figure out a way that we can replace these lights. In your second year, if you have another $300,000 CIP, then I would say at that point, go to all the locations. We have decorative poles that are still non-LED. And Cree, for example, said, hey, if you send us one of the lights, we'll actually design a LED fixture to work for you. And they only charge you $750 per light because they figure, hey, it's if it's an issue for you, they know it'll be an issue for another city. So for them, that's a small investment. And then you get a light that will work without having to replace the whole structure. Just take out the bulb, plug in a new one. That in that second year, we would also recommend work with PG&E to figure out where you need to add more poles or, you know, figure out if you have to build the poles yourself. If if you did want to move forward with a full citywide replacement, you'd need about $260,000 per year for another five years. And this was an old slide. That should be a total budget of 1.9 million, not three. Yeah. Bang, wow. All right. We do recommend though that you also maintain that $100,000 CIP because you need it for knockdowns. You guys have a lot of knockdowns in the winter time. A part of that is because the streets are dim. You know, this is your LEDs are getting older, there's light distribution, you're going to see more knockdowns. So by replacing the streetlights and filling in those dark spots, you will hopefully see less knockdowns over time. So with that, I'm going to end it there and hand it over back to Courtney.
So again, this is just to present options. We're not tied to that. That's just a rollout of phasing plan. We didn't know what the numbers were going to be until we saw this and apologies, it is 1.8 or 1.9 that we're looking at, which is significant for streetlights. And I think that part of this was us wanting to turn the management around so that we're not just reacting, waiting for bulbs to come out and people utilizing, see, click, fix, or reaching out to council members or reaching out to us. But us being able to have some overall management of of the streetlights and our assets. So we'll answer any questions and if there's any feedback on the the phase out plan, we are open to that. Again, we haven't committed to anything. Well, I'll work with our finance director and look at options for funding. We'll continue looking for additional funding to not rely on our own budget for these kind of repairs. This is more just informational of the results of the inventory and what we could do. Councilmember Dutra?
Thank you. I appreciate this. And this is something that's been really important to me and the residents of my district. And I know Courtney hears from me a lot on this. So I have a couple of questions. Yeah, what happened?
Yeah.
Yes. I am on it. $300,000 a year, is that to change? Because it sounds like some need to be retrofitted, some need to be just bulbs changing. So or do they all need to be retrofitted in order to have the 60-watt bulbs?
Thank you for asking that question. Let me, let me clarify in case. What it is, is when the streetlight fails, that's on a PG&E pole or one of your metal poles that are usually about 30 feet tall, you have to replace the whole unit. The whole unit comes down. It's not a bulb. It's it's an actual ballast that is the light and the electronic components that take the power and convert that energy into a light.
The gray poles?
Yes.
Not the ones that are on the telephone, the telephone poles that are kind of really dim?
Both. So if it's on a 30-foot pole, a city-owned pole or a light that is kind of hanging off of a wood pole, a PG&E utility pole, those lights are the same. So that 60-watt replaced that we talked about in that image, that that works on either pole light. The the ones that are decorative poles, we don't want to replace the ballast if we don't have to because that gets really expensive. So that's what I was saying. It's a nice option for us to be able to send one of those units to Cree and they'll create a bulb for you. So the the socket that the high-pressure sodium bulbs plug into, they would create a special LED bulb that plugs into the same socket. Because or else you have to replace the whole acorn.
Yeah, I I know that in the Burlington neighborhood, the one pole was completely replaced because it was that people crashed into it. And so they had to reorder it. And what I believe is that that is actually a different kind of pole than the rest of them in the neighborhood. So would that be just a special pole or would we convert them all to be like that pole?
Unfortunately, if you don't have an inventory of a specific decorative pole, they stop making poles after a certain amount of time. And so you likely would not be able to get the same pole that's in that Burlington.
Not the pole, but the the like the lighting to be able to change just the so that the so that the light is all is illuminating the same. And all illuminates the same, that it looks the same, right? That pole is different with a different probably like body of
Different ballast.
electrical work versus the other ones. So would you have to change the electrical part of the other ones in order to be the same as the new pole? Or is there a way of just making sure that it's illuminate? I don't like when it looks like you got a light and then you got a, you know, a brighter light. I want it to look, you know, uniformed.
We would want to avoid replacing all of the the lights themselves. We would want to just replace the bulb that plugs into the back, what I call the ballast. And so if there's been a ballast that's been replaced because the pole was damaged, we would want to make sure that whatever LEDs we get for all of the other lights have a very similar matching okay, distribution pattern. Or the other option is just, hey, we take out the lights in that new picture that was replaced at the knockdown, just replace it with all the other same lights everywhere else. And you should get the same light distribution.
Okay, thank you. That answers that. So $300,000 a year sounds like a lot, but I mean, this is a one-night, .9 million dollar project. I'm a little bit more, I don't know, I think like when you do a project, I like seeing a project done, start it here and do the project like replacing lights and then life, it's gonna be all different. It'll illuminate differently, correct? The old ones will look one way, the new ones will look a different way. So you're gonna look like a, the streets are gonna look weird.
It is a transition. We came up with this plan under the assumption that trying to come up with $1.9 million all at once might not be doable. And so this, this was a phased rollout. Knowing that we're we're chasing larger grants for like the one that I mentioned earlier, to see if we can make the transition happen quicker than seven years. But we we thought $300,000 might be more palatable number within your budget than 1.9 all at once.
The motto, get out your checkbook. But so I guess that's gonna be up to the council, how they want to move forward, like whether or not they want to just start on the streets and kind of make it look, I mean, it might just get longer to get to the other districts, but and just replace maybe the bad ones as they go out because for safety reasons. But you know, start the problem somewhere and just work on the streets and get them done. But still replace the ones because we're all about safety. I mean, some of these streets are really, really, really dark. I had somebody ask me the other day, I said, she told me that her light is out, which I have to report still. But it keeps going out. So it sounds to me, it might be a problem with the actual like lighting.
Probably the ballast.
The ballast itself. So are you going to be checking all those balances or like?
So the balances are more an issue on the decorative poles because again, those are the ones where we're just
It was on the light.
If it's one that's on the wood poles above.
Yeah.
Then we would likely need to check the wiring back to the PowerPoint. But yeah, please share that information with us. And whenever we do a swap out, we'll have a look at that.
Okay, and then okay, and then the question on Main Street. If I'm correct, I mean, are are those are those poles staying or going in this, I mean? Yeah, because I thought during the conversation with Nick at one point, we were going to get new poles. So if they're staying, then you know, invest in it. But if they're gonna go eventually, I think that they should be the last things to be worked on because we're, it sounds like we might be replacing them. So I think we need to keep that in consideration. The Monterey County lighting, that's funny that you make that comment that they're waiting for us. It's all, it's interesting when it's benefits Monterey County that they are, you know, working with us. But are we having to pay for the entire fixed fixing of the light, light fixtures? Or are they paying for that part?
It'd be a 50/50 cost share.
It's a 50/50 cost. Okay, so, okay.
But the cost they gave us, I think it's too high because the quote they received was assuming that they're replacing all the acorns and the ballast lighting. Our recommendation is don't do that. Let's ship one of those units out to Cree or somebody else's. It has to be Cree because it's just my recommendation.
Right.
And then let's just find new bulbs that we can plug into the existing ballast.
I like that idea. See, you are a professional and we like you. Um, I think that's it for me, but I vote for the 60 watts in the neighborhoods. That's, that's what I like those.
Councilmember Montesino?
Oh, no, this is really important for me. And I think, you know, the price tag, it's actually, I thought it was going to be bigger. I I think this is 1.9. That's kind of cheap. But that's in my world, you know. Because of the investment, what the benefit that is going to provide to the community is just, you know, amazing to be able to walk a night or be, you know, it's gonna actually gonna bring people out to walk, you know, more. So so how, you know, where does the coming from? Is it general fund? Is it, you know, Public Works? What, what, what funding are we talking about?
We don't, we have not yet identified a funding source for this. I, this was an exercise that stems out of preparing the budget last cycle, prior to Courtney joining us. And I looked at the line item and it was like $35,000. And I asked the question at that time, like, how many light bulbs do we change with $35,000? At that point, I learned that we do one and a half. And it it just really intrigued me to say like, well, you know, how do we illuminate our city? Hearing the conversations in our general plan, we are talking about feeling safe, walking our community. And for that, we ultimately will need better lighting. So so we talked to Courtney, she embraced the idea and brought Jaime on board to to do an assessment. How much do we need? And and yeah, like I I concur with your assessment that it's not as much as I thought it would be. But it's still stiff when you don't have it, right? So so our plan is to go after grants. Now we have the information. We know exactly how many poles, we know where. We know what we need to do to repair them and we know how much potentially good cost. So we're gonna go after grants. I've already had a conversation with 3CE about the potential of partnering with us and funding some of these. The grant that Jaime and Courtney been working on. And then when it comes time for the budget, we will see about what monies are available that are one time only and then see what we can allocate to these and the council will of course decide. But I I do think in many conversations, we have heard lighting our community is a priority. And this is what, this is the first step.
I'll add one thing to that, council, council member. Your district meeting, I think, was very enlightening that, enlightening, that the lighting came up. This came up a lot, right? And so we see it, yes, it's a citywide problem, but we absolutely heard from residents in specific districts that it has a direct correlation to their kind of quality of life. And having that kind of feedback is really important when we are going after grants and looking at partnerships where we can not just come at it from a city standpoint, but from a community standpoint and telling the story of our residents. So yes, it's a bummer that it took this long, but using this as an experience and using that narrative to be able to go after funding, I think will help us in the long run.
Yeah, no, I definitely agree. But you know, I would definitely encourage fast tracking, you know, somehow, some way, you know, that, you know, through the budget conversations, whatever that, you know, because seven years is seven years too long. You know, you know, be long gone by then, you know, just got reelected, you know. I want to see the assessment, you know, before I leave, you know, so thank you.
Councilmember Salsido? And maybe this was in your presentation, but And maybe this was in your presentation, but in, within the boundaries of our city, how many poles are PG&E owned? And how many poles are city owned again? If you could just look at that. And then my question, so um, in terms of the city owned poles, um, my question is for damage, right? Uh, impaired drivers, it's like a moth to a flame, right? They just find the pole and crash into it. It's my experience. When it's a city owned pole and there is damage from an at fault vehicle, let's say they're insured, this may be more of a tomato question or you. What is the manner in which we recoup drivers that may or may not be impaired or there's insurance? Or um, how do we recruit that as a city?
We, we do, we do. Once we know, if we know who did it and that person is insured, typically we, we go back and attempt to collect.
Thank you. That's it.
Any other questions from council? All right. Well, thank you very much for that presentation. It's definitely a much needed um, upgrade for our residents. All right. Next up, we have, we're on item two B, a report by City Manager Venus regarding a task force on homelessness.
Uh, Police Chief Samora and Parks Director Kalabac joining me. As uh, this is going to be all around a team effort. Um, we wanted to share with the council kind of like the next steps and in terms of uh, how do we continue having um, the homelessness conversation um, that we've initiated uh, earlier this year? If I can go to the next slide. As you may recall, uh, back in March of 2024, we uh, held our first community meeting uh, where we dove in into um, homeless. The experience that the city was having with managing homelessness in our community. And came up with about four buckets that the city was really interested in exploring uh, more um, solutions that we can uh, consider. Uh, later in the summer, we received the PIT count that is basically the, the homeless census uh, results that pointed that we have seen an increase in our city in, in the number of homeless individuals that um, are in our city. And that inspire um, our conversations with the council and the community. As to what is our action plan? What is Watsonville doing? How are we collaborating as government agencies with other government agencies, community based organizations and partners in the city to address this issue? Therefore, right after that, we had an October 5th community meeting and we had an opportunity to really uh, dive in a little bit deeper into what is it that we can do to solve this issue in our community? And I will pass it on to Nick who will um, take us from here.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council, Nick Kalabac, Parks and Community Services Director. Uh, so what you see on the slide here is just a quick synopsis of kind of some of the, the, the top 10 themes that came out of our October 5th meeting. Um, you can read down the list here. I won't read them all kind of one by one because I know we're kind of um, time restricted tonight. But if you look at the list, um, it's kind of a mix of actionable items along with um, kind of community values that, that community members, nonprofit leaders and council members and city staff came up with. So as, as we kind of looked at the, at the list, we were trying to figure out, okay, what do we do with this? There's some great ideas here. There's also kind of some, some good uh, phrases or, or again, kind of values that's that, that kind of synthesize how to approach um, the topic of homelessness, but it doesn't really give us a nice clear path forward. Um, for us to, to work on as city staff along with our community members. So what we're looking at doing next, um, again, kind of thinking about the four different categories or, or buckets that we looked at on October 5th is to um, create action groups or working groups around uh, these, these specific areas that involve um, not just city staff and community members, but also experts in the field in all of these different areas. Um, so the idea really is to create a task force. Um, and uh, I'll pass it to uh, Chief to talk about next steps.
Hello, Mayor and Council, members of the community. Uh, what's my police chief? Uh, so why a task force? Uh, because what we need is a focus of effort to, if we're really going to make progress on this, we really need to focus in on each individual issue when it comes to homelessness. The, this is a long been a, a social issue that touches everybody. So I think everybody kind of owns a bit of the problem, whether it's indirectly or indirectly. So the task force would engage community members and uh, city employees, nonprofits to really develop an action plan to move forward. So when we talk, when we say the word homeless, I always think that it's, I've always said before that it's a kind of a conflated word. It just kind of throws everybody into one pot. But what we've learned is that uh, homeless people unhoused uh, really encompasses a variety of people. And there's different reasons why people become homeless. So our response needs to be different. And what we need is different experts who see a different issue or a different part of the problem. Um, so as you see here, we have uh, you, the city council, and then the task force uh, development plan uh, of action. And below that, there's five different buckets, I guess, of the types of people or the types of responsibility that everyone would be responsible for. For example, for law enforcement, we would handle the, the uh, enforcement piece. So when it comes to uh, city employees, we're all kind of in it together because again, it impacts all of us. So Nick and I will be in charge of the task force, uh, along with Courtney uh, Lindberg. And then the enforcement piece is going to be uh, handled by Captain Radish, also known as Mish, who's somewhere in the back. And Assistant Chief Avila from the fire department. Then we have the management piece, I'm sorry, the housing piece, which is Carlos, and then prevention would be Nick. Um, services and resources would be Alicia Martinez, and then policy and funding would be Tomata, would be this, our CM, Marissa Duran and Mary Wagner. So that's kind of the idea of us moving forward. And I believe, oh, this is a, one last slide, the application process. So when we engage community, we're going to put out a um, application for people to fill out to Watsonville residents. Um, anyone who works for a nonprofit in town or, or a service provider doesn't necessarily have to live in Watsonville, but they do provide a service to, to our folks here and business owners. And we're asking people to put in their top three areas of interest. And applications will run from November 3rd to the, December 4th, followed up with a kickoff meeting in January. That is it.
Questions from council? Councilmember Sancino?
Thank you, Chief. Uh, I was wondering if you could just briefly talk about um, how Prop 36 passing could impact your enforcement capabilities for the homeless um, that are struggling with drug addiction, specifically possession of fentanyl, methamphetamines and heroin? Um, how will that impact how you can enforce possession of those specific drugs?
So with Prop 36, again, we're not looking to arrest people just because they're homeless and they're using. The goal here is to get them into treatment. Uh, for us, we have the ability now to arrest someone and charge them with a felony as opposed to a misdemeanor. So they would end up in county jail more than likely. Are you asking as far as what our process is to?
No, if you, I, I think that's helpful to differentiate like before, if somebody just possessed um, uh, usable amount of those drugs, that was a misdemeanor. That, is that accurate generally?
That is correct.
Okay. And now that's shifted so that you have other enforcement tools, not saying that you will use those all the time. You can still use your discretion, but there's more tools for enforcement after the passage of Prop 36?
Yes, there's definitely more tools for, for enforcement in that sense. If it's a felony, we really have no choice but to arrest somebody, um, even with, with some misdemeanors. But again, we have to work closely with the, the DA's office, the courts to really have the, the same goal in mind and to get these homeless folks who are in late stage addiction into some type of um, recovery program or some type of um, program that'll make them better, if that makes any sense.
I have a question. Um, for the task force, uh, the applications are November 13th through December 4th. How many people are we looking to recruit for the task force?
So as you can see on slide, if you can go back to slide six, what our hope is to build at least five working groups. And uh, we talked about membership and we're like, hey, how many people we want? We want people that want to engage and that are interested. So we don't necessarily are coming in with a limit. Uh, what we do want to make is progress. So if 70 people sign up for a working group, we will hold the meetings, there are five or 70 show up, but we will, we will, we want to make progress. So that is um, the ideal right now, not necessarily to limit participation, but to up, allow members of the public that have an interest in any of these areas or an expertise to be able to sit at the table and contribute towards exploring solutions together. So that's the idea.
Excellent. Thank you. Other questions from council? Councilmember Montesino?
In regards to, you know, you know, how many people you get for your um, each uh, task force? Like what if you don't get but two people in housing?
We, we will, we will invite our friends to complain. No, I mean, there are definitely, no, there are definitely individuals, professionals. Yeah, no, there, there's definitely some of the working groups that will appeal more than, than others to certain individuals. If you go back to the last slide, please. Um, if you can see what we're asking people uh, as a way of managing what you're bringing up, uh, Councilmember Montesino is give us your top three. You know, do you have, and if we have too many people in housing and we need a couple of people in resources, then that was your option number two. We will talk to you and try to place people at least in, in one of their top three choices. That's why we're asking, what is it your ex, your area of expertise? And, and uh, just list your top three interest areas.
And what's the timeframe?
So our idea um, is to have individuals in our community apply to serve on this, in the working groups that will support the task force. Uh, we will hold our first meetings in January and um, it will take, you know, four or five months to kind of like work through creating a plan. So hopefully by the summer, the council will see um, some ideas um, in terms of a work plan. But also along the lines, just, just being able to work on, on uh, opportunities that come up through those, through that engagement and discussion. So we don't have to wait for an action plan to be created to take action.
Okay, thank you. That was my.
Councilmember Dutra?
Um, so is this for um, Watsonville residents or for city of Watsonville residents? I, I grew up in Watsonville, but I, I don't, I didn't grow up in the city of Watsonville.
We're hoping that, we're hoping to engage with members of, members of our community that reside in Watsonville. So you live in the city of Watsonville, you're a resident of the city of Watsonville and you want to participate and be at the table. It's, it's open for anybody.
Green Valley Road, you're, you're Watsonville, California, but you're not city of Watsonville. So how are we making that? I understand people from Aptos and, you know, Monterey County, but like, how do you make that this, is everybody?
We are, we are asking if they live in the city limits.
City limits.
So, yes, so we will want people that reside in the city limits or that do have an interest in the city limits.
Okay.
Which means that they own a business or they work for a service provider here in the city of Watson.
Cause I feel like a lot of people that don't live in city, that live in Watsonville, but don't live in city limits, still feel like they're part of Watsonville. So, um, okay.
Yeah.
And there are questions? Mayor Prosa?
No, no questions, just a comment. So I'm just glad that we're tackling this on really early in the process. I like the idea of the task force, but I definitely like the idea of the different buckets. It's such a complex issue that I think that's very much necessary and I'm hoping that we're able to recruit some folks with less of experience in those areas and folks who just have the best interest in the community.
Awesome.
So thank you for uh, bringing this forward.
Any other questions from council? All right. Seeing them, thank you very much for that presentation. And likewise, I'm looking forward to hearing um, what the task force comes up with. All right. Moving forward, we are on item three, consent agenda. All items appearing on the consent agenda are recommended actions that are considered to be routine and will be acted upon and as one motion. Any items removed will be considered immediately after the motion. The mayor, that's me, will allow public input prior to the approval of the consent agenda. Would anyone from the public like to speak on the consent agenda? If so, please come forward to the podium. All right. Seeing no one from the public, I will bring it back to council.
Would like to make a motion to approve?
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, we have a motion and a second. And we, any discussion before we go to roll call? Nope. All right. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Dutra?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Orosco?
Aye.
Sancito?
Aye.
And Quidos Carter?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. So we are now moving on. Um, we don't have any items removed from the consent agenda. So we are going to go ahead and move forward. Um, any closed session correspondence can be found in the packet. And we will be moving into closed session. So public comments regarding only the closed session agenda will be accepted by the city council at this time. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to speak on uh, the closed session? All right. Seeing no one from the public wishing to speak on a closed session, we will adjourn. We will uh, resume at approximately 6:00 PM. Thank you. All right. We are back from closed session. May I have roll call, please?
Clark?
Dutra? Here.
Montesino?
Here.
Orosco?
Here.
Parker? Sancito? And Quidos Carter?
Here.
We have Quorum.
Thank you very much. All right. Do we have a motion to excuse the absent councilmembers?
Make the motion to excuse uh, Councilmember Parker and um, Park.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Dutra?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Orosco?
Aye.
Quidos Carter?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much. All right. We're moving on to item eight. Please stand Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to item nine, information items, reports of disbursement, miscellaneous documents, reports and written reports by councilmembers can be found in the and written reports by councilmembers can be found in the packet, the agenda packet for this evening. So now we're going to move on to item ten, presentations and oral communications. This time is set aside for members of the general public to address the council on any item not on the council agenda, which is within the subject, matter, jurisdiction of the city council. No action or discussion shall be taken on any item presented, except that any council member may respond to statements made or questions asked, or may ask questions for clarification. All matters of an administrative nature will be referred to staff. All matters relating to council will be noted in the minutes and may be scheduled for a discussion at a future meeting or referred to staff for clarification and report. All speakers are asked to fill out a speaker card and leave it at the podium. Speakers are asked to announce their name and district in which they live in order to obtain an accurate record for the minutes. Would anyone from the public like to speak on an item not on the agenda? Now is your chance, please come to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you. I am reading this on behalf of Murray Funtz, who usually delivers this. Just a reminder that this Sunday, November seventeenth, at two o'clock, we are doing the World Day of Remembrance for road traffic victims. If you recall, we do like a brief walk, people can share their stories, share experiences, you know, good and bad. The activity will honor those affected by road traffic collisions. With a commemorative walk, provide information on how the city and local partners are working to improve traffic safety and how residents can help prevent traffic collisions. And if you saw in the paper, there was a beautiful and tragic article that was written about this. So I just wanted to bring some attention to this event. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else from the public like to speak? Please come to the podium. All right, going once, going twice. I'm not seeing anyone else from the public. So I'll go ahead and bring it back to council. Council, would anyone like to begin? Councilmember Dutra?
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everybody. Almost, we had a good Halloween and almost Thanksgiving and soon to be Christmas and Happy New Year. So I, over the last couple of weeks, I supported the Omega New Group here in Watsonville. I went to their bungalow, they raised money for women's organizations. So I really enjoy this organization and always love supporting them. So great job to the Omega New Watsonville chapter. Also, Happy Veterans Day to all our veterans out there. I hope that, you know, I want to thank you for your service. I, my grandfather from Intavarez was in, served our country, Latino and American. And I just want to say thank you for being a student that I could be here on this dais and in this country. So thank you so much. And then, you know, I thank you also to all the voters in my district. I appreciate you sending me back to, or to stay here on the council for another four years. And I look forward to being a, continue being a big voice for us here in Watsonville. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from council? Councilmember Montesino?
Good evening, thank you for being here. Really want to appreciate everyone that came out and, you know, and went out to vote. You know, there were, there were some long lines at the voting day and our, you know, election. You know, our department was, you know, you know, strategical in staffing it or even over the weekends. I saw, I saw I'm working here all the time. So just really want to thank the community for coming out and voting. Really, you know, our measures that the council put on, Measure V and Measure D for charter changes, it's a great success for our community. So those are going to, you know, continue to provide, you know, dividends in, in the future. I also want to thank the, and congratulate the school district, you know, for Measure, Measure M. Looks like it's going to, it's going to pass and, you know, it's going to be greatly benefit our community. It's a really huge investment, you know. But it goes just in line to all the investments we've been having in our community from the levy project, you know, to the hospital, you know, that we, we don't celebrate, I think, enough. Well, all these investments are coming in our community and are, is going to look a lot different in, in future years. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? Mayor Protem Orozco?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. I also want to wish our veterans a Happy belated Veterans Day. We thank everyone for their service. We had a really fun evening supporting the Community Health Trust of PB, their annual Wine and Roses this past weekend. I also attended the Courage March hosted by Wilder in celebration of Santa Cruz woman who stepped up to run for office in 2024, where Anna Ushu was recognized for her leadership and years of service. It was also a pleasure to celebrate the dedication and hard work of our Watsonville Police Department at their promotional bench painting and major award ceremony. Thank you so much for the invitation. And lastly, I attended the Friends of Watsonville Parks and Community Services Board of Directors meeting. Just a reminder, we do have a brick fundraiser in support of Ramsey Park. So if you're interested in ordering your bricks, you can learn more at friendsofwatsonvillePCS.org. And lastly, thank you so much for everyone who showed up at those polls and voted this past November. And thank you to all who supported Measure V and W, I think is going to be great for the city of Watsonville. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Salsito?
Just wanted to echo my excitement for Measure V and Measure W passing. Mayor Protem Orozco and I were on the subcommittee writing diligently along with our city attorney all of the different drafts for our charter to edit it, to update it. It is a tremendous win, it speaks volumes to our community. I also wanted to highlight and cheer that the mayor was able to attend the rally that occurred shortly after the election at the county building to really reiterate to our communities, specifically our migrant community that may feel unease, like many of us, that the migrant community here in Watsonville is very much welcome. They are part of our community and they are our workforce, they are the backbone to who we are. And we care very deeply and we want to make sure that they feel protected and they feel safe. So I just wanted to appreciate the mayor for attending that rally. It's very important that you know that we here are here for you. Our departments are here for you. No matter what happens federally, your community still is very much welcoming and desire your input and your efforts. And we wouldn't be Watsonville without our Watson, without our migrant community. So thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Let's see, yes, as Councilmember Salsito mentioned, I attended a press conference affirming to PAC document and GBTQIA community as well as other marginalized communities. So we, as a county, many leaders came out in support of maintaining our sanctuary city and just affirming their commitment to support all our residents regardless of their status, regardless of their orientation. So that was very powerful and I was very honored to be there. I also attended the Wine and Roses event with Mayor Protem and Councilmember Montesino. I also attended the Thirty First Annual Peace and Unity March, which was really, really moving, really amazing. And it's the oldest of its kind, not only in California, but in the entire United States. So that's pretty cool. So thank you so much to everyone who worked really hard to put that on. It was a really nice event to remember our community members who were taken too soon from violence. And then you'll notice there's a lot of proclamations today and there's something a little odd on the agenda that usually doesn't happen until December. I will speak a little bit more about it when we get to item eleven A, but this will be my last meeting of the year. Unfortunately, I will be on medical leave December and, yeah, all throughout December. So I will not be here for quite a while, so you won't see me until the new year. With that, I think we can go ahead and move forward. So we have finished item ten B, we're moving on to item ten C, our report out of closed session.
Good evening. Oh, good evening, we had a closed session on the items on the agenda and no reportable action was taken.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, we're going to go ahead and move forward to our proclamations. We have quite a few this evening. We're going to go ahead and start with classic Calavera tattoo and Pepe Nunez. So if you can meet me down at the podium, I will see you there. There we go. All right, so I, as you can see, am very tattooed. People like to ask me, like, why do you get so many tattoos? Some people like to buy diamonds, I like to buy artwork. So I just wanted to take a moment and recognize our wonderful artist. I know so many people who have gotten their art tattooed on them from you and just wanted to say thank you so much for being here in Watsonville and showcasing art and artists and allowing people to be your canvas. So thank you very much. Would you like to say anything?
Thanks to the community, I'm really happy to be a part of the place where you come from.
Thank you so much. All right, next up, let's see. Should have brought my agenda with me. All right, next up, we have Somos Watsonville and Reverend Juliana. Please come on down, I'll meet you at the podium. Let me find your proclamation here. So, thank you very much, I've been to your space, it's very lovely. If you have not been to Somos, you should drop by for some coffee or some very cool activities. I just wanted to say thank you. You've been super welcoming, you're in district two in my district and it's really great to have another space to have events and a safe place for people to go and just create community. So thank you very much. Would you like to say anything?
We started Somos with a really simple premise, that what if we just showed up and served coffee and gathered around a common cup and built community? And it's a testament to this community that it has succeeded and, you know, changed my life certainly, but I hope also made an impact in the community's lives. That's a testament to some of the organizations that we work with and partner with and also to the amazing people in this community, whether they are young people who are here at this meeting with us or unhoused folks or young people or campesinos or the grandmothers who take care of our neighborhoods. Everyone is welcome at Somos and that's why we're called Somos for the idea that Somos agrados. And we want to tell that to every single person who walks through that door. So follow us on Instagram and check us out, come by and have a cup of coffee and even host an event, we're always there for this community. So thank you for allowing us to be a part of it.
All right, thank you so much. All right, next up, we have one of my favorite places, we have La Pila de Pacifico. Do we have anyone? Oh, welcome. Thank you so much for being an institution in Watsonville, for your delicious cooking and your wonderful children, I'm friends with Adriana. So I just wanted to say thank you very much. The mariscos are delicious and we appreciate you and yeah, thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Just a few words. I'm nervous. Well, I want to say thank you to my husband, because he's been my pet, he's all the time on me. And thank you, Watsonville, for making my dreams come true. Our dreams was our kids went to school in Watsonville, they went to university, now they're working. Thank you, Watsonville. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, we have Milpa, I saw you, where are you? Come on up. So one of the things that Milpa does is they think ahead. So they think for the next seven generations, is that right? So I think that's super important because we can't think about today, right? We have to think about tomorrow for our grandchildren, children, great grandchildren. So I really wanted to say thank you so much. I appreciate all the work that you do. I know all three of you and you're all wonderful. So thank you very much.
I just want to say thank you too and congratulations near term and wishing you a lot of success and health. And thank you, you know, because it's partnerships and people like you that make Watsonville Watsonville and I'm grateful that it's coming from you.
Yeah, well, this was, it was a surprise, you know, it was like, you know, I got the notice and I was like, what? You know, so now I'm still here, like, what? You know, so, but one thing that I'll say is that I know that oftentimes, you know, folks have, we're at odd ends, you know, of practices and politics or whatever it is, you know. But for us, we're always trying to find that middle ground. You know, it's like, how can we create change for the community for the next seven generations, right? Specifically here too, hometown Watsonville, right? So just, yeah, you know, you ever think about, what is Milpa? Who is Milpa? You know, we're just right across the street. We encourage you to come check us out, three one five Main Street, suite two oh six, right next to the Public Defender's Office, right? Yeah, come check us out, trip out and have some platica and, you know, get inspired and get involved. What you want to add?
One thing, I think I like, which is Somos agrados, right? And I didn't know that was the name of it, but I think for us, we think all our children are blessings, right? So that's how we do the work, all our children are blessings. So that's what we're trying to do in the space. Everybody that comes through the space is a blessing. So that's what we're trying to do, create that space for our community. But thank you for this.
Thank you very much. All right, let's see, we've got two more. If we can have our outgoing poet laureate, Bob Gomez, come up, please. Where are you? There you are. All right, so Bob was our poet laureate last year and, oh, last four years, oh my goodness. I remember a beautiful poem that you read for us. Excellent poetry that just kind of stirs the soul and really showcases the beauty of our community. So thank you very much. Would you like to say anything?
Yes, hold your applause.
Thank you. Yes, I have a few things to say. Mostly about our new poet laureate, who is here. Don't be embarrassed, she's going to be so great. What I want to do first is, is just read the email that I sent to Alicia when we decided who was going to be our new poet laureate. What did I say? I said, Dear Alicia, the selection committee for the next Watsonville poet laureate met today and our unanimous and unequivocal recommendation is for Dr. Victoria Banyalis. Now you can, now you can apply. Redick. Yeah. She's great, you know, you know her. She's great. You know her, you love her. We reviewed all the applicants' resumes, qualifications, and poetry. Dr. Banyalis stood out to us for many reasons, chiefly because of the high literary quality of her work. In addition, she demonstrates advanced skill and expertise in teaching young people about poetry writing, editing, and publishing through her Journal X class. As lead teacher in the Puente program, she has strong connections to students, faculty, and the community at large. Her ideas for advancing the craft of poetry in Watsonville and beyond sound very creative and intriguing. Her experience as a published poet who has attended multiple writing residencies will further establish her as a leader in the poetry community of our region. She is that rare person who with integrity and humility values collective action more than personal success. Thank you. And as I, as I accept this beautiful proclamation, which will, I don't know, it might go in my man cave or something. I wanna, I want to present something that I promised the council I would do when I was named poet laureate in 2022. And I said, I'm gonna pass something along to the next poet laureate, and here it is. Hey, check this out. Do you know what this is? It's a clay figurine from Santa Clara Pueblo in New Mexico, northeastern New Mexico. They call it a mud head or a mud clown. I prefer the native name, cochare. It is a seated speaker or storyteller, right? And look at that. He's got, he or she has got the hands to the mouth, either singing or speaking, right? The ears are sticking out and open and listening. The eyes are wide open and like bugging out. And then on the top of the head, there's another opening. You see, the storyteller and the speaker listens to the greater spirits. The greater voices that are out there, not just the one coming from inside, but the one that speaks largely to everyone. The voice that says liberty and justice for all. That's a real thing that we fight for, right? So in that spirit, here you go, Vicky, the cochare, which you're, you're welcome to keep for yourself or to pass along to the next poet laureate. We love you, Vicky. And thank you to the city council.
Well, I don't know. I don't know how I'm gonna follow that.
So Alicia Martinez, library director, and I am so honored to have had Bob as our poet laureate for the last three years. Thank you for the clarification. It was actually our library, ex-library board member, Victoria, who came up with this idea to have a poet laureate. And it came to fruition when I became director. So I'm glad that we're continuing this. And hopefully, we will see more, I'm sure, already planning for poetry events coming up in 2025. And also, she will be mentoring our youth poet laureates. And so it's such a welcoming experience. And thank you so much, Bob, for the last three years. It was such an honor. You've worked closely with Chris and our pastor librarians, who have now retired. And it's just been an honor to have you now on our poet selection committee.
Thank you, Alicia, again.
I can't follow either of them, but thank you so much. Your literary journal is fantastic. Really appreciate, I'm a big fan of the literary arts. And thank you for nurturing our minds and our spirits and our souls. So thank you very much.
So yes, thank you so much, everybody. This was a big surprise to me. I had no intentions of applying at some point maybe, but so many people encouraged me. Chris, Rebecca, my president, Matt Wedstein, who's in the back of the room, and yeah, and my, my friends from the Writers of the South County, a lot of them are here, so excited. And of course, Journal X, big inspiration for our community. If you don't know about Journal X, it is a social justice literary arts magazine published by Cabrillo College. Thanks to the Hispanic Serving Institution grant, anybody can submit. So I brought a few copies. If anybody wants one on the way out, we usually distribute to our public libraries here in Watsonville. So it's art, poetry, writing, and all. So I'm really excited to serve as the next Watsonville poet laureate. So stay tuned. Got a lot of ideas and projects in mind. So thank you, everybody.
Okay, I think we got it. Thank you so much. All right. Thank you, all of our proclamation recipients. We appreciate all of you. Thank you so much for coming. With that, we are going to move on to item 11, new business. I guess Mayor Protem, is it your turn? So as I mentioned, I'm having surgery. So I will not be able to be here for the December 10th meeting. I will be recovering from surgery. So I won't be able to be here. So we're doing something a little different this year. So I'll hand it over to our future mayor.
Thank you, mayor. So on behalf of council, we want to present the following recognition to you for this long year of service as our mayor. I really wanna, yes, thank you. We want to thank you for your year in leadership as our mayor this past year. And I just want to echo how much we appreciate your commitment to the arts community, to youth empowerment, and to bettering our community as a whole. And I think more importantly, serving as that advocate for the things you really care about. Sometimes going above and beyond, even when you have to stand alone. And so that takes courage, and so I applaud that. So thank you so much for your service.
I guess it's my, my turn to speak. I, this year has been one of the hardest, loneliest and defining years of my life. I have definitely learned a lot about myself. I've learned a lot about what it means to sacrifice, and I've sacrificed a lot for my community. I don't know why I'm so emotional. I didn't think I would be. But I've learned that when you sacrifice and when you are there for others, others will be there for you. It has been a long, hard road for me with a really steep learning curve. And I want to say thank you to my colleagues for putting up with me. And I, I really want to talk to the young people. So if you're listening and you are feeling some type of way about where the world is right now, it's up to you, okay? It's up to you to make the changes that you want to see. Dolores Huerta said, I was fortunate to see her at the Mellow Center, and she said that so many young people come up to her and say, oh, you know, I would love to live back then. I would love to live in the 60s in the time of civil unrest and civil change. Right now is that time. And that's what she said. Right now is that time. We are living through moments in history where we can determine the outcome of the world that our children and our grandchildren will live in. And that's something that I'm very proud to have done. I've sat up here. I answered the call to serve my community. I've done that consistently since I was 16 years old. So it's never too early to get involved. You have to be the change. You have to be the ones that are gonna pick everything up because I'm getting old. I'm almost 40. I can't do this much longer. But all of you who are young and ready to hear that call to action, this is the call to action. So I want to tell you, don't be afraid. Actually, no, I want to say that. I want to say, be afraid and do it anyways. I cannot tell you how many times I was scared to get up here. I cannot tell you how many times I was scared to meet with people in Washington DC and do all of these things that I've done, but I did it anyways, and you can too. So with that, I just want to say, please answer the call. Do what you can. Everybody has a place. Everybody has talents. Everybody has something to contribute to make our community the best community that it can be. And with that, I will turn it over to council.
I just really want to thank you for your, your leadership and, you know, and we've seen your growth, you know, during this year. So I really want to, you know, acknowledge that. And, you know, and I know it's, it's tough. I've been, you know, you know, you know, the last time that I was mayor was easier for me, you know, because, you know, the first time around, you are scared. You are scared of, you know, a lot of things, but you, but you end up, you know, getting the courage to do it, to advocate for your community. So I just want to, you know, thank you for, you know, for, for doing what you do, representing your community.
Thank you.
Want to call on me?
Mayor Kieros Carter, you've done an outstanding job this year. You run a tremendous meeting. There are times that you had to deal with really difficult subject matter, and you showed continuous grace under pressure in navigating us through those moments where it is tough to navigate the seven of us together in any direction. And you did it admirably and with conviction. And I am so excited that you are coming on for a second term. You are a person of tremendous ethics and conviction, and I think that will serve our community extraordinarily well in your next term. I'm looking forward to the things that we can do together. I think you've done a fantastic job. It was amazing to see a woman in the seat and two women in both as mayor and vice mayor that have just done outstanding work. You have worked extraordinarily hard this year, and you deserve all the accolades and accomplishments that we could possibly praise you with. So tremendous job, great job, and I look forward to working with you in your second term. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ducha.
Well, I want to say thank you for keeping everybody in line. I would be, I would love, like, be quiet over there down the whole meeting, because everybody has their little side comments. But I do want to say that I have to echo what everyone has said. You, I've seen you grow so much as the mayor, and I was telling you earlier today, it's just, I feel like you get, you're at your pinnacle now. And I'm like, we need another year, you know, and, and, and I feel like I know you also on a personal level, you know, we've traveled together and represented our community in, in different places and, and and you're really a kind person and you have a very, very big heart and you just really, what you, the things you believe in, you just stand behind. And you don't care what anyone else says, you know, you believe it. And I think that's really important because in today's, you know, political world, a lot of people are influenced by others and they'll sway. And you have a belief that if you believe in something, you stand by it, whether you are, it is a six one, or if it's, you know, or, or wherever you stand, you, you really have that, that belief. And I think that sets you apart from a lot of, of people. Because you and I, we sit on boards where people just kind of rubber stamp and get on board with each other. And I want to say thank you for helping be a big voice on boards in North County because we are, we are constantly fighting for funding and, you know, in having equal, equal distribution down here, and you are a huge voice. You, 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 you stand behind your conviction, and I really appreciate that. So I'm really glad we get to work together for another four years and, and I think we're all a really good team. I mean, this is honestly one of, I've been a council for a while now, and this is probably one of the, one of the better councils where we all, even though we may not all get along with each other, we respect each other and almost everybody. And, and, and we get stuff done. And so you're very lucky that we were able to accomplish a lot of things this year. So thank you so much and good luck, good luck another three years.
Thank you very much. All right, well, thank you very much. I really appreciate all those kind comments. I have always strived to do my best, and I will continue to try to do that for the next four years. With that being said, we don't have any emergency items. Oh. I'm so, I'm too shy. All right, I'll go out to members of the public per Councilmember Dutcha's request. Would anyone from the public like to speak? Please approach the podium. I see someone. Welcome.
Yeah, Bernie Gomez here with Milpa. Just Mayor Kieros Carter.
My apologies. Could you lift the microphone up so we could hear you? Thank you. You can even pick it up too, if you like.
I need to put my hands here because I'm starting shaking. Vanessa, Mayor Kieros Carter. I just want to say that, you know, you, you made that bold decision, right, to run. You know what I'm saying? And, and it takes, it takes courage, you know, it takes, it takes some, yeah, it takes courage, you know, to, to do it. And I think the cities are the better for it, you know? You bring a community perspective, right? You can bring your own perspective, your own experience, right? And it's an honor. It's been an honor to also cross paths with you, share palabra, circulo, right, being all those things. And I look forward to that, you know, there's a lot of work to be done, our own, in our own lives, in the community, right? All that stuff, you know, and especially in the climate nowadays too. So more than ever, you know, I believe we need folks like yourself, you know, in position of leadership, you know, so really appreciate you and hope you have a happy holidays, you know, get some rest and look forward to continue building with you next year and the rest of the council as well.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else from the public like to speak?
Hello, my name is Kitty Mizano, and I live in Adal Village. I'm just here because I'm really concerned since the election that we need to be, we meet, the city council and all of us need to work together to create a plan to protect our residents in the city from being deported. And I was listening to the radio today and heard a story of what happened in 2019. I was, it reminded me of the time when there were mass deportations in the state of Mississippi. People who were working in, I think it was a meat factory, something like that there. And sudden, it was the first day of school, and all the kids went to school in the morning. They raided the factory. And when they came home, their parents weren't there anymore, many of them. And we need to be aware that, that this may become a reality for us, and I hope that we can work together to do something about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'll hold it. I need to hold things. But no, I just wanted to give you your flowers, not, not rushing, but to say too that. Thank you. Um, I'll hold it. I need to hold things. But um, no, I just wanted to give you your flowers, not not rushing, but to say too that thank you, you know, because you did answer the call four years ago, right? And you threw yourself head in, and I've looked up to you ever since. I looked up to you the, from the day I met you. But to see you do that and to do it with such flair, like, I don't know if you realize how badass this last year has been and and how amazing. Yeah, no, I look up to you and and I I just thank you, you know, thank you endlessly um for everything that we've seen and everything we haven't seen and and doing it to as such a role model. Your strength is in your kindness. I have always seen that endlessly here too, even when it's like this stern kindness. Beautiful. Like, I don't know how you do it, right? Um, but yeah, just so much gratitude and so much congratulations and wishing you everything that you want. And also congratulations on Measure B, congratulations on another term. And thank you, guys, you know, thank you for everything that you guys did and for making Watsonville what it is and and continuing that on. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Would anyone else from the public like to speak? Good, because my ego can't take. I have a hard time hearing nice things about myself. All right. Seeing no more comments from the public. Um, we don't have any emergency items added to the agenda. Do we have any requests for future agenda items from council? Councilmember Montesino?
I'm gonna go back to my bandwagon here. Um, cleanliness, 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 downtown, downtown, downtown. Um, where are we getting more trash cans? You know, because they, you know, um, we need more trash cans so we we were to drop off and, you know, what are we going to do? You know, we're going to start, you know, the holidays, we're going to start, you know, coming into the new year. So what 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 are we doing? So we can be back something.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Dutcha?
Um, I'd like to get like a presentation on street cleaning and how that works. Um, you know, I, and and how the the parking ticketing works as well around it, that the whole process.
Thank you. Any other requests from council? All right. Um, seeing none, I'm gonna hit this one more time and adjourn. Thank you.